I missed it.
I'd like to call the meeting to order.
There's no way with it anymore.
Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Cincilla.
Here.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigant.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen are present. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner. Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber Salvatore.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Interim Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
They're all here.
Yep.
Okay, very good. We're all here. Garrett, well Garrett's gonna be here. Assistant City Attorney Brian Flynn's sitting in until Garrett can arrive, but he'll be here shortly, we believe. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, for everybody who's able, if you would please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do want to say before we begin the meeting, I want to first of all congratulate Chris Rothweiler. He got sworn in just moments ago to Ward Six Aldermen, and I want to also say, he snuck out already, but I wanted to officially thank the Honorable Kevin Horner for coming back again for doing the swearing-in ceremony. He was here when the first seven, and Chris was out of town, so now we got all eight, all eight aldermen sworn in, so we appreciate that, and we appreciate Judge Horner for helping us. There's no public hearing this evening. Let me please just go over a couple things. It looks like a beautiful day out there, but if we had to leave this building for storm purposes and we had such a crowd like this, the police officers, and there's many here tonight, it's always great to see that, but they would help guide you across the lobby to the doorway that goes right across from the clerk's office to the basement where we have a safe place in case there's bad weather. If we had to leave ever the building during a meeting for smoke or fire, we'd ask that you'd go out the front or back door calmly, but we would ask that you'd go across the street carefully and go to the courthouse sign so that we can kind of see if everybody you came with has been accounted for, and that's just to help the fire department if ever such a need was ever to arise. So thank you for listening to those instructions. We're gonna open public participation. If anyone would like to speak tonight, please raise your hand, I'll call on you. When you do get asked to come forward, please go to the microphone, give your name, try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, and try to keep it on city business, and preferably even something that's on the agenda. So at this time, I'm going to open up public participation. Is anyone interested this evening? Okay. Well, we must have a lot of things being answered ahead of time. So I'm gonna close public participation, and we're gonna move on to the presentations and recognitions and appointments. The first thing I'd like to do is we do every first meeting of the month, is we recognize the character word of the month. This month it's self-discipline, which the meaning is, thinking about your words in action and then making choices that are right. Usually many months, we have the basic education youth come and share with us the discipline, the character words, and we're always glad to see the high school students of the basic initiative here, but we always want to continue to share those character words that you see throughout the city, and we all should try to strive to live by those. The next thing I want to just note and make mention of, Congress designated May as National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure that the nation was given the opportunity to publicly demonstrate their appreciation for the sacrifices and successes made by our service members, past and present. And I think we need to, I know they had a nice gathering the other night for the military ball. I know I was unable to attend this year because we had a thirtieth birthday party for our one daughter, and so we had to certainly be with, sometimes you choose and you gotta be with family. But I just want to say, having, you know, having, like many of you, having a relative that's either served in the military or is currently still in. I know, like many of you here, my father and my father-in-law were both active duty in World War II. I know today that I have, my oldest son is active duty, and he's getting ready to be deployed again for the ninth time in July 1st. So the military service that so many of you in this room have given in the past, and so many are still giving today, we must make sure we stop and thank our veterans, and thank those who serve, because it is, it means a great deal to the success of this great country and to the future of this country, so make sure you thank our military people whenever you see them. As we go on, we go to some appointments. At this time of year, every year, we have a lot of different vacancies on committees and terms that come up and expire, so we have to fill them. I have seven C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J recommendations for appointments. I can read them one at a time and we can vote, or we can read them as a group.
Read them together if you can.
Is there someone who disagrees with that? Is everybody, is that okay with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read off my recommendations, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve them as a group, if that's okay. So my first recommendation is, Mayor Eckert will recommend the appointment of Russell K. Scott to serve a three-year term on the Board of Foreign Police Commissioners. The second one is, I would like to recommend and the reappointment of Molly McKenzie and Tony Tenius to each serve a one-year term on Historic Preservation Committee, Commission. The next recommendation is that I would like to recommend the reappointment of Carol Keely and Mary Carbon to each serve a three-year term on the Library Board. The next one, I would like to recommend the reappointment of Tom Dingus to serve a two-year term on the Police Pension Board. Next, I would like to recommend the reappointment of Jane Kurtz, James Kurtz, and Larry McLean to each serve a three-year term on the Planning Commission. And then I would like to recommend the newly appointment, and there was a little resume, I believe, in your packet, to appoint Neil Skip McEwen to serve a three-year term on the Planning Commission, a vacancy that was left by Tony Tenius. Seven I, I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Dan Nolman, Don Rockwell, each to serve a five-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And lastly, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Andy Gah to serve a five-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, a vacancy left when Scott Ferguson was elected Alderman. Do I hear a motion to approve those appointments? Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Steele. Any discussion on those appointments? Are there timelines? Their timelines are set in by ardentance, that's how they're established. Roll call.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if any of these folks are in the room, I say thank you in advance for being willing to serve. There is a time commitment and a certain amount of time it takes to learn the job and to get out and do the research, and the city of Belleville, on behalf of all of us, thank all of you who have agreed to either newly serve or once again serve. At this time, we get into the regular portion of the meeting, and I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of April 15th and April 30th. We had a special meeting 2019, and the executive session minutes of April 15, 2019. Do I hear a motion to receive and file? Alderman Pousa, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additions or corrections to the minutes that were in your packet? All in favor of approving those three sets of minutes and receiving them and filing them signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go now to the claims, payroll, and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $3,567,689.08 and the payroll in the amount of $899,861.12. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear discussion on the claims or payroll? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a little advertisement right here. When you hear $3 million in claims and almost $900,000 in payrolls, I just plead to all of you, shop in Belleville as much as possible. That's what pays the bills, so thank you so much for that. We go on now to item number 10, reports, or reports from standing committees. We have, first of all, the first item tonight is a recommendation from the Board of Foreign Police Commission for two promotions. First one, I'd like to ask for a motion to promote Detective Patrick Kebby to Sergeant effective Tuesday, May 7, 2019 at 12:01 a.m. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Randall. Do I hear discussion on this first appointment, this first promotion? Roll call.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chief, would you like to introduce these two gentlemen? Tell them just to keep their speeches to about five minutes.
I believe we're gonna go with Jim. [laughter] This is our new sergeant, Patrick Kebby, that's going in. He has been with the department since 2010. He is currently in Investigation Team, remaining there as a supervisor of investigations. He is on Major Case Squad, Lead Homicide Investigator, and he does some other fancy stuff, with all kinds of technical stuff that we can't do. He's been through all kinds of schools, the phone, and everything else, and he is a very valuable asset, and we're very happy to have him. [applause] And this gentleman here, I was his field training officer, so I'm very proud of him. He came and worked, and I was his primary field training officer, so we worked together, and we had some really good times together, you know that.
We did.
Yes, very well. And he has done a lot of things, where he was field training officer, and he's now sergeant on squad, and patrol right now, he'll be a squad commander for us, and he'll be on the night shift. That's basically the chief, because when I'm away and everybody else is gone, it's his decision, so he decides what happens for the, for the police department, so he'll take over. He's been with us since 99.
That's funny.
Yes, and you were talking about veterans, and this young man has served in the Army, and he is currently active duty right now. I mean, in the Army.
Active Reserve.
So, very, very happy to have him, and he'll make a great addition, so, thank you. [applause]
I know there's quite a bit of family here tonight. With the family of either of these two gentlemen, raise your hand or stand up so we could see all the family members who are here. Stand up, there are families, Tom and Pat. Now, I'll, I'll date myself a little bit, but Chief Clay talked about being John's field training officer. I don't think we had such a position years ago, but I know my father, his dad, Tom Hunter, Captain Tom Hunter retired. My father, I can remember when Tom rode with my dad when he was young probationary patrolman, because I was just a youngster, but I remember Tom riding with my dad many, many years ago. When did you get on, Tom? About 1969, or?
It's been fifty years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, unfortunately, I remember it. So, I think I was in junior high when you started. Yeah. So, see, the family does follow these footsteps, and I think it's great, so thank you to all the family members, and thank you, I fail to say this many times, the police department is really good about bringing a good contingency to these promotions to be present, and I don't think the chief is twisting your arms. I think you're here because you know it's the right thing to do, to support each other. Hopefully, he's not paying you overtime to be here. But anyway, we're, I'm very pleased to see you here in support of your fellow officers as they climb the ladder, so thank you to, to all of you for being here tonight, all the men and women. Okay, we move on, we got a few, number of things to do yet. We now go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I will, the first one, 11B. You gonna read this, please?
Yeah.
No, I hope so.
Yeah. 11B-1, 03 February 19, Gary L. Vecley and Greg Vecley, a request for a special use permit to allow used motor vehicle sales at 4524 and 4530 West Main Street, parcel number 08180208075 and 08180208051, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248 and 162.515, Ward Eight, zoning board unanimously recommended denial.
I make a motion that we deny this request.
That you deny it?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, and do we have a second? Second by Alderman Barfield to deny. So you're concurring with the zoning board on their recommendation. We have a motion, and we have a second to deny. Do we have other discussion? I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, if I may.
Randall.
We're voting to deny.
For voting to deny, yeah. Yes, aye vote.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
No.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, which means the request has been denied. We also have, as a formality, we still need to go through 11B. Do I have a motion from, you wanna read it? Yeah, please read it first, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
11B-2, 04 February 19, Gary L. Vecley and Greg Vecley, a request for a use variance to provide automotive services less than 50 feet from a residence district at 4524 and 4530 West Main Street, parcel number 08180208075 and 08180208051, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.247 and 162.570, Ward Eight, zoning board unanimously recommended denial.
Make a motion that we deny this request.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Barfield, reference 11B, in this case first, Gary Vecley and Greg Vecley. Discussion on this item, before is on the second vote. Roll call. I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask a question.
Yeah.
Is this the office building within 50 foot of the plant? Or the neighbor's flat?
The both, the buildings are, it's because of both buildings, right? Anissa, within?
Yes, correct.
That was the request originally.
Yeah, that was, so they had, that's a separate, they're both, there's a house right behind them, residential, right?
Yes.
Okay, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. So, any further questions on this case number 11B-2?
Mr. Mayor, there's changes in the packet here.
That was a proposed, that was a proposal, is a possible consideration, but then the aldermen from the ward have made the recommendation to not go with that, but to deny. So that's, that's why, you got that as a possibility, but it didn't move off the alderman's recommendation. So at this time, I'd call for a roll call vote. Once again, an aye vote is to deny.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
No.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
No.
Duco.
No.
Oh, I said aye, I'm sorry. You mean aye, okay.
It's a little confusing, aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. This case also was turned down, when they're, when they're voted down, and we're voting aye to sustain the, the turn down, it's just a little bit more confusing, sorry about that. We go down to 11B-3, would you please read that one?
Yeah. 11B-3, 10 March 19, Well of Living Water Ministries, a request for a use variance to use a secondhand article drop-off container at 6500 West Main Street, parcel number 07120210037, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the code 113.046 and 162.570, Ward Eight, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. This item was tabled at the April 15 meeting.
Okay, on this one, I'd ask for a motion to approve, all in favor, and have the proper ardentance drawn. We have motion by Alderman.
I'd like to make, make a motion that we approve this request, and I'm making this with trepidation, and then, then I'll come back to aye.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. So we have a motion and a second. Do you want to comment and a discussion?
Yeah, as you know, we put together an ardentance several years ago, because we had these clothing boxes popping up on almost every empty lot, they were impossible to control. We had our hand on this for a few years, and now they seem to be popping up. I talked to both women, and, you know, I told them that you've gotta police it. It's gonna be right behind their building, as she says, it's gonna be emptied once a month, but I also let them know that if, since I drive up and down West Main all day long, if I ever see a lot of stuff accumulated on the outside, I just want to let them know that I will do everything I can to get it removed, because I think, again, we need to get, to get a handle on these boxes that are popping up all over the city. So I think they, since they had one in their other location, they know how to maintain it, take care of it, so as a result, I'm making that request that we approve it.
So we have a motion, we have a second to approve it, and certainly we do strongly request that they're monitored, because when stuff gets piled on the outside and they get overfull and then it rains and everything, it becomes a, then I have to call Jason to come pick it up. So at this time, we have a motion and a second for 11B-3. All in favor and have the proper ardentance drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go to the next one, 11B-4, Jenny.
11B-4, 13 April 19, Bart Burkheder, a request for a use variance to establish two portable storage containers as a permanent structure at 600 South 19th Street, parcel number 08200410064, located in an A1 single-family residence district, applicable section of the zoning code 162.570, Ward Two, zoning board unanimously recommended denial. We ask that this be denied at this time. It's in a residential neighborhood, and there's three of them, and all at the same, like, same place, so we're asking for it to be denied.
So your motion is to deny 11B-4.
Yes.
And there's a second? Alderman Duco, you'll second that motion. So we have a motion, a second to deny, and it was also denied by the zoning board. All in favor of denying 11B-4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The next one, there's, there's a couple segments to this.
11B-5, 14 April 19, Bart Burkheder, a request for a special use permit to establish two metal exterior storage containers larger than 150 square feet at 600 South 19th Street, parcel number 08200410064, located in an A1 single-family residence district, applicable section of the zoning code 162.094 and 162.515, Ward Two, zoning board unanimously recommended denial.
Do I hear a motion for reference?
I make a motion that this be denied again.
Motion by Alderman Pousa, do I hear a second? Alderman Duco, to deny. Any other discussion on this item, 11B-5? All in favor of denying this item, as, as also recommended by the zoning board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We got 11B-6.
11B-6, 15 April 19, Bart Burkheder, a request for a use variance for storage, not accessory to the principal building at 600 South 19th Street, parcel number 08200410064, located in an A1 single-family residence district, applicable section of the zoning code 162.034, 162.035, and 162.570, Ward Two, zoning board unanimously recommended denial. We ask that this also be denied.
Motion by Alderman Pousa. Alderman Duco, second. We have a motion, a second to deny 11B-6 also, and is there any further questions? All in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go to 11B-7.
11B-7, 16 April 19, Kathy Mordini, a request for a signed installation permit in the area 11B7, 16 April 19, Kathy Mordini, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of special control to establish a mural at 126 East Main Street, parcel number 08220338049, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the city code, 155.052 and 155.053. Ward 6, zoning board recommended approval with a vote of 4 to 1.
I hear a motion, a motion by alderman Steele, second by alderman Schaefer to approve this. Is that, I'm taking motion to approve 11B7. Any discussion on this item? All in favor of 11B7, and have the proper ardents drawn, signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
11B8, 17 April 19, Michael Smith, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of special control at 16 North Jackson Street, parcel number 08220334246 and 08220334050, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the city code, 155.052 and 155.053. Ward 2, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
I make a motion that this be approved.
Motion by alderman Pousa, do I hear a second? Alderman Duco seconds the motion for case number 11B8 to have this item approved and have the proper ardents drawn. Any additional questions? All in favor, signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 11B9.
11B9, 18 April 19, Tim Hasenstab, Charlie's Off Main, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining at 200 Moscota Avenue, parcel number 08220348011, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.248, 162.400, and 162.515. Ward 7, zoning board unanimously recommended approval contingent on sign code compliance.
I hear a motion. Motion by alderman Rothweiler, second by alderman Elmore. Just one comment, I mentioned it tonight at the zoning board. I will talk with Mr. Whittaker and Mr. Hasenstab, who filled out the paperwork, about setting the hours, because there are people who live above and just to the right, I guess if you're at the building, or to the left if you're facing the building. So we want to make sure we, we talk about the hours and the precedent we set with people living so many feet away. So that will be discussed, you know, as soon as we move forward on this. We have a motion, a second to approve, 11B9. Is there any further questions? I'm sorry?
Yes, on this, is he even going to have some kind of fence?
What's that?
Is he going to have some kind of fence put up there, you know, for the seating?
We, we, the city engineer went out there, and my, my big question was, do we have ample room for ADA compliance?
That's right.
The tables really need to be back as far as they can be. We do not have it in the budget. This, this came about after we had set our budget this year. Bollards are fencing, probably, Tim, or minimum of what, about $6,000?
Depending on the size, you can, you can get up around, you know, eight to 10,000.
Maybe, eight to 10,000. We don't have the, we don't have, we do not have bollards or fencing in the budget this year. This is not in a TIF, so this would have to come, it would either have to come if the owners wanted to spend that money, and then we'd bring it back for your approval, or we would have to present this to the council out of the general fund, because, I believe I'm correct, right, Eric, it's not in a TIF right there.
Correct.
So that was talked about also. I certainly like the bollards and the fencing with outside dining, but, but I think if they keep the tables up against the building, keep their distance, you know, they're, it's not fast-moving traffic, but it is a really weird designed intersection, and, and it, you know, it is kind of unique there as cars turn and come around the corner. Roger?
Oh, yeah, Danny? Go ahead.
That's what I'm afraid of, you know, somebody hitting there, you know, if they could put up some kind of pillars, maybe, you know, it seems, seems like a bad spot.
Well...
You know, I'm just thinking the safety part of it.
Well, the one thing we did talk about, this does not, this does not allow dining on the, what would that be, the south side or southeast side of the building, is that right? It only is in the front of the building, because we feel like there's some safety if they're up closer to the, the tables closer to the building, and have that little bit extra feet, the ADA room closer to the curb. Now, the one thing was said made sense. There's no talk of removing parking, so the parked cars actually do provide some protection to the people who are sitting up against the building, and I, I believe that's correct.
Well, I didn't know what side they were going to have the seating on, if it was going to be on both sides or in the front, you know, because I know that one side on the side of the building, it gets kind of dangerous there.
Well, we're not going to allow, it's not going to be allowed on the side as you're going around the corner on Moscota. We, we think that would be a little bit, that would be a little bit too dangerous.
Okay.
Would you be setting the number of tables? Will you be giving a, a number or how many?
Yeah, I think on that drawing, what was there, guys, was there five or, five?
Five, okay.
There was five at the max, so we, we felt comfortable with that. And the only thing I stress again, and I, after all the times in our early experience on the downtown Main Street dining, we had a couple people who turned us in regularly, never to be, had a problem, but turned us in regularly to the Attorney General for suspicion of not having enough 48 inches of walk space for wheelchairs. So we just got to make sure that we keep that space open on the sidewalk, and that we don't violate that rule. That's a thing that's important.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the sign code compliance at Charlie's.
Yeah, I don't know, that was put on there, Anissa, can you explain that?
They have a banner up there.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Okay.
There were, there were banners up against the wall, as well as those flag pendants, and those are not allowed per the sign code, so as part of the contingency for the recommendation for approval, those had to be removed, and they have been removed since the zoning board.
Thank you.
And, yes, sir.
Before you get away, and also, our ordinance states on outdoor dining, that, what is it, the tables have to be at night?
Well, they're supposed to be secured.
Right.
We don't want them to be able to fly and become a flying object in storms, but we'd like to have them either taken inside, which I think you said that probably would happen. Is that what I, did I hear that, Tim, or, are they either had to be secured, chained up?
They have to be secured, or they have to be taken in every night.
Taken in.
They're not allowed to be left out without having some means of anchoring them.
And, and we do, we also told them that our policy is that we like them to be the black rodar, and so there's a contingency throughout the downtown area. Plus, that hoses off nice as you're, go to clean them and wash them down, et cetera, you know.
That goes for the umbrellas, too, the table umbrellas, they have to call them.
Correct, because umbrellas in high wind can fly.
Yeah, so they have to be, they have to monitor it, it's just, the outside dining is fabulous downtown, but it does provide a little bit of a challenge. Any other questions for Anissa? And, and I just want this comment about the banners, that was pointed out, but we know that a lot of other places put the banners up, and they put them up because of video gaming. We just don't have the staff, unless there's a specific complaint, to go out and police all these. So somebody's going to say, well, why do you let so-and-so do it? If we get a complaint, we go out and then we address it. This particular one came up at a zoning request, and somebody raised the issue, so we had to address it. But, but basically speaking, we, we just don't have the staff to, to police the number of people who unfortunately don't get permission, or don't check the rules about the banners, and, and because they're supposed to be temporary, and you're supposed to have a temporary approval.
And, and we'll keep, because it's so close to Ward 6 by the corner house.
Yeah, no, that's right.
You know, when you make that curve...
Right, as that continues, that, yeah.
We'll probably get, um...
Yeah, exactly, it's, it's right.
Some feedback.
Right, back and forth across the street, the historic district, and that's, you know, very important.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, and we have a second to approve 11B9. Any further discussion? All in favor of this recommendation, and have the proper ardents drawn, signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 11B10, clerk? Adam clerk?
11B10, 19 April 19, Moran Foods LLC, Save-A-Lot, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 4515 West Main Street, parcel number 08180210017, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.248 and 162.515. Ward 3, zoning board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only.
Do I hear a motion, reference alderman Randall?
Your honor, if we could motion to approve in the name of applicant only.
We have a motion by alderman Randall, second by alderman Ferguson, 11B10, in, in the name of the applicant only, that's also fine. With that, is any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I just have one question, I had an answer, but I just want to make sure, this is for beer and wine, am I correct?
That's the request, beer and wine. I'm sure that's what, yeah, I read it. Beer and wine, okay. We have a motion from the Ward 3 aldermen and a second, that each of them approved recommending 11B10 in the name of the applicant only, and have the proper ardents drawn. There's no further questions, all in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Do we want to swap our attorneys, since?
Absolutely.
This, this is not intermission.
Is that fair trade?
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm sure you are.
We had a guy here earlier, kind of looked like you.
Dead giveaway.
Dead giveaway. Okay, this time I would ask the, our fine clerk to read 11B11.
11B11, 20 April 19, MH Bellevue Associates Joint Venture of Swida and Bywater Development Group, request for a special use permit to establish a multifamily dwelling containing 47 apartment units at 16 South Illinois Street, parcel numbers 08210445040 and 08210445041, located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.428 and 162.515. Ward 6, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Do I hear a motion representing, motion by alderman Schaefer, second by alderman Steele to approve 11B11? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got a couple questions. The standard's going to be 47 units there, that's correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, out of them units, how many will require assistance from the city?
Twelve.
Twelve? I think we brought, when we presented this before, it was 12.
Twelve.
I want to make sure it wasn't 10, it's 12, yeah.
Okay. And that's for 10 years, is that correct?
Length of time?
Length of time.
10 years, David, David, Mike or Shakenor had 10 years.
Okay.
And we're going to continue to ask the county to strongly consider, like they did for Swansea, and like they did for Cathedral Cottages, that they would strongly consider granting those vouchers for the city of Bellevue, like they did other neighboring projects.
And have we considered the parking?
Yeah, and, and I think we've established, there's 12 spots after they tear down that little section of the building. 10? 13? 14? Okay, we're getting up in the world. 14 spots after they tear down the small little building in the back that's extended off the kitchen. There'll be 14 spots for the most needed seniors or handicapped right there. And then we have, in tonight's arrangement, we had talked about before, hadn't formalized it, but we have it ready now, to provide up to 22 spots at our lot that the city owns right down the street here, behind the Bank of Bellevue, in our city, city lot there. And that was also in acceptance with Ida. They're working on other parking solutions, but this would get them everything they need. Roger?
Mayor, if the county grants those 12 vouchers, then, then we don't have to provide any assistance or a less amount.
That would free us, that would free us if they were to do it. They just had to be upfront with us that if the county does not give us those voucher assistance, then there's the price tag that we talked about before, as we explained, that we'd be responsible for up to 10 years. I think this council, once we, you know, it was silly to, to make a big mountain over that when we didn't, we had to get the project this far and get it going, but I think we made the commitment, this council, that if it came down to that, we felt strong enough in that vote we took a while back, that, that we would support that, but we're still very, I'm still very hopeful that St. Clair County Housing Authority will grant us those 12 vouchers. I think they gave, what did they give Swansea, Mike?
15.
15, and then?
The county just got 21, 28.
The county did what now?
The county just, three counties, I think.
28 and Swansea, so I don't think a request from 12, from the city of Bellevue, once this project moves out of the gate, is, is going to be, and it should, I don't think it's an impossible ask. I, I know there was some, but, so we're going to continue to go after that, because they have funds provided through their, through their program. That, is that from Ida also, Mike? The funding that they get there, is that through HUD?
The county's, right.
Ida, yeah, right, so it's a lot of the same funding that provide the voucher money to St. Clair County to distribute. We're going to be hopeful that we're going to be able to convince them to strongly consider those 12 vouchers.
I, I think it would, you know, and I would hope, I would behoove that, that they would step up to the plate, because I think this is, it's a, it's a good solid project. Mike and Lundie and Bywater put a lot of work in this, as well as the city, and, you know, when you're talking about, you know, all these other ones that have granted, and granted 12 isn't out of the, it's not, it's not a crazy request.
No.
12's a pretty minimum, out of 47 units.
I think, I think we will be, we will be bringing that back to the council for support for that request in the near future down the road. I, I just want to say this, I attended, some of you here might have too, I attended their ribbon cutting for the, the facility at Swansea Station over there. It's beautiful, it was really well received. I know the mayor of Swansea and others are just delighted to have it, and I think that's what we got to look forward to here, so it'll be good. And as we all know, the senior population is not getting less, it's getting greater, and I think there's a definite continued need for this housing, this type of housing. So we have a motion, and we have a second to approve 11B11. Alderman Ovian?
I have a question. This is just basically for public record. I want to know what they, the meaning Bywater and Swida have in place, what mechanism to guarantee that only senior citizens ages 55 and up are going to be living in this, in the Meredith Home.
Go ahead, Dave, you want to approach that, please?
Yeah, just to...
Yeah, I guess if you can, that way we can pick it up to record it properly. Who designed this room?
It's an important question, happy to answer that, and the answer exists on a number of levels. Number one, our application for the special use was that it be a senior multifamily development, so we assume there's some enforcement teeth in that request and approval. Secondly, this 55 and up designation is a federal government, check the box on what type of development you're, you're going to have, and under those guidelines, if we violate that designation by admitting younger people, we would be in noncompliance with the terms of the housing credits, and we're always trying to avoid that. We will have a written occupancy or residency standard that everyone will see before they sign a lease, that will include the age restriction and the fact that any violation of that age restriction is subject, you know, as a grounds for termination of residency. I guess the final reason, which does is really important, is that our team wants to develop a comfortable senior facility that's not going to get confused by a bunch of other stuff, so we're always going to be monitoring that, and we're long-term owners of the property, so it's going to be in all of our interest to make sure that's adhered to.
Thank you for your...
And, and keep in mind also, they'll all have occupancies with the city permits, and they will also follow crime-free housing.
Right.
So those are other aspects of our city code that must be followed.
Mayor, can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
Assuming this will be approved tonight, is, how many more hoops do they have to jump through? I mean, how many more layers, steps?
There's, there's one step we're waiting on, Dave, you want to go ahead and explain?
Ida has approved all the financing related to the housing credits, so now, you know, if we could move forward with the special use permit, then we're on track to begin the closing process with, with Ida, which takes some months, because there's a lot of documentation that has to be done, and a lot of attorneys involved, so this is kind of our final municipal step in the process.
And just to remind everybody, Dave, it's approximately, what, about $12 million reinvestment?
About 13 million.
About $13 million reinvestment in the Meredith Home facility, and it's about, what, a 12 to 14-month process?
About, we estimate 14 months.
14 months, and this will be skilled labor that will be used for all these, the union workforce will be there in full force, the carpenters and plumbers and electricians and everything, so.
Hollow construction.
It'll put a lot of people to work for quite some time. Okay? Any other questions? Because of all the question and, and interest in this project, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. An "aye" vote approves the recommendation that was approved by the zoning board unanimously, and would approve this, as just explained. So if there's no, nothing, no one further, I'll ask for a roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiegant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
No.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and we look forward to moving this project forward. We have one more aspect of this tonight with the parking, so if you want to sit tight in case there's a question there. 11B12.
11B12, 21 April 19, Linda Weisenstein, a request for a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast Airbnb at 626 East Garfield Street, parcel number 08270134044, located in an A1 single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, 162.094 and 162.515. Ward 6, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve this item? Alderman Ferguson, second by Alderman Pusa. Any discussion?
Just a quick note for the record, uh, we just feel that we need to make sure in the record that it also reflects that this person is a local person that's going to be here, uh, in the neighborhood and that was very positive in their application process. Uh, we have dealt with applications similar to this or non-applications, I should say, in our ward and, uh, so we're very happy for this person to, uh, move forward because they're locals.
No, we, we're familiar with Linda's, uh, tender loving care she puts into this prop, with these properties and she's gonna be living just two doors, I think two doors away, one door away. So, right there, she will be the gatekeeper for her own property. So, we have a, we have a motion and we have a second to approve 11B12. Is there any additional questions? All in favor of approving this i, uh, item recommended by the zoning board and have the proper ardentance drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go on to page six. Um, motions from Economic Development, I'd ask for a motion, Alderman, Consilla, this is your, this is your committee, you take over.
On behalf of Economic Development and Administration Committee, I make a motion to approve a development agreement with JMS of O'Fallon Corporation Incorporated for facade improvements located at 1008 Carlyle Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion was by Alderman Consilla, second was by Alderman Wiggington. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Ovian?
No.
Dillman?
No.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Upstate.
Wagon?
No.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
Aye.
What do we got?
Anthony?
I'm sorry.
What do we got? Oh, it ran out of fingers.
So, we have, um, 12. Four noes, 11 yeses, one abstentions.
Okay, so 11 to 4 to 1, right?
Yep.
Eyes have it. I thought we only had four noes, but I wanted to hear what you had written down.
Mayor?
Okay, yes.
Can I be excused for something? I gotta get this, very important.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time Alderman Consilla, your next motion?
Uh, I make a motion to amend the development agreement with Stargazers Entertainment LLC and Stargazers Entertainment LLC Drive-In located at 5500 North Belt West.
We have a s, motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on this item. Kent? Alderman Randall?
I think I heard him say 5500.
It's 5600, yeah. We'll correct him.
Thank you.
You, you accept that correction, right?
Aye.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? The development agreement was in your packet and this has been talked about quite a bit in committee, so I'll call for a roll call vote.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time I'd ask for a motion to approve the parking agreement that's in your packet between the city of Bellevue and the, uh, M. Meredith Home Bellevue Associates LP as we talked about just a couple of minutes ago. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Ferguson. Do I hear discussion on 11E2?
How many spots is it?
22, is that correct what the agreement was, Eric? 22. If there's no further question, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Those ordinances approved. We go now to, I ask if there's a motion to approve reading by title only, ordinance number 8332. Alderman Schaefer, second by Dillman to read that ordinance by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
15F, ordinance 8332, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 10 March 19, Well of Living Water Ministries. 15B, ordinance 8328, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 16 April 19, Kathy Mordini. 15C, ordinance 8329, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 17 April 19, Michael Smith. 15D, ordinance 8330, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 18 April 19, Tim Hasenstab, Charlie's Off Main. 15E, ordinance 8331, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 19 April 19, Moran Foods LLC, Save-A-Lot. 15G, ordinance 8333, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 21 April 19, Linda Weisenstein.
Do I hear motions to approve ordinances 8327, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 33?
No.
Motion by Wiggington, second by Hazel. Any discussion on those ordinances that were just read? Roll call.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.